I will keep my comments brief. I am here to talk about the ordinance. My name is Ann Brandt. I spent eight years as executive director of the Women's Center in Rhode Island. And in that capacity, we spent a great deal of time working with hundreds of women and children every year trying to find safe, affordable housing. It is a very difficult problem in the state and certainly in Pawtucket. After leaving there, I went on board the Elmwood Foundation that focused on developing historic properties into affordable housing. And we had many superb developers working with us to achieve this. And my hope is that Pawtucket will do better than 10%. It is the lowest permitted in the state. We need to have wisdom in producing housing that integrates affordable housing, low-income tax credits with upper-income housing. And I want to share with you the findings from Stanford that they published in December 2017 about the results of those cities that are using low-income housing tax credits. They find that the pedal to the neighborhood is substantial. When we talk about rejuvenating an area as huge, as impressive as this one, there are developers who can do that with us. And we as a city need to really put forward our best effort. To set an example, we can go above the state minimum of 10%. We can be 15%, maybe even 20%. And if it's done right, according to this Stanford result, the value of surrounding properties will increase, the positive feeling about the changes happening in the neighborhood, the rejuvenation, the excitement, the sense of other people wanting to come and provide jobs and establish businesses. That will happen. Not only that, but the diversity, income diversity, racial diversity will occur without the kinds of upsets that people fear. Average crime will go down as the fabric of the community is increased, is improved. And the other finding they had was that welfare costs decrease. So there is a lot for Pawtucket to look at. And there are developers out there who are expert at producing, as we found the Elmwood Foundation, beautiful housing. So people are excited to move into it, and they're excited to be part of a vibrant community. Pawtucket can do this. I'm new here, but I know from what I've seen of people in Pawtucket, this city can do it. Thank you.
Each fellow question?
Thank you very much, Mr. President and members of the council. My name is Phil West. I was director of class for many years and have worked on affordable housing. I'm probably one of the oldest representatives of the community, John Bear.
I don't need to dance that.
Probably one of the oldest people in the room tonight. And I've worked on affordable housing in New York City, in Connecticut, and here in New Orleans. And there are some basic lessons that I think are very relevant to the Connetts Reg project. First of all, I really want to affirm the work that you have done so far. This is a very impressive ordinance in the form that I have read it. I understand, however, that there is pressure that some of you are receiving to say, take out the 10% of affordable housing required. And you're getting pressure from developers. I understand that. I've seen it before, many times, and in many places. And I want to urge you not to do that. If anything can increase from the state minimum of 10%, go up to 15%. And require 15%. They will do it because this is such an opportunity. The station, once it comes here, will be crucial for developing the surrounding neighborhoods. But what I have seen over the years is time again, once developers win the argument and the amount of affordable housing is reduced, the effect is the gentrification sets in. And gentrification is a rash that only goes in one direction. And the effect is that the poor are driven out, and you have an exclusive community that develops very rapidly and becomes very protective. Unless you require at least 10%, at this point, you will never get that. So now is the time to do it. Now is the time to invest on it and not to back off, no matter what the developers tell you. If they say we can't do it, let them go somewhere else. Others will come. This is a one-in-a-lifetime opportunity for the city of Pawtucket, and I urge you to take it and make sure that it's properly integrated project. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
I appreciate any question. Thank you. Would it be the next from you down?
Yes.
So, all right. Brooke Linda. All right, all in blue. Okay, I got it. Thank you. All right, Lauren Donaghy.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the council. I'm here to speak for older women, the fastest-growing demographic in our country. I asked for each of you a coffee and study recently completed by the United Progress Institute here in Rhode Island and the Lewis Foundation.
Could you please speak louder or closer? We can't hear you. Thank you.
Sorry, I can hear you. The study shows how significantly aging women, and particularly aging women of color, are distinctly disadvantaged in the area of housing. In our city, in Pawtucket, the percentage of women of color has increased since the last census by 15 to 14%. We now have 22% of our population are Latinx women, and 17% of our population are African-American. The study that I showed you will demonstrate that 31% of those Latin American women are over 65 and are living in poverty. 25% of the African-American women are over 65 and live in poverty. These numbers, of course, are calculated statewide, but I ask you to consider that applying the numbers to the city of Pawtucket would result in proportional results. The EPI study concludes, you will hear testimony tonight, I know, that Rhode Islanders are currently spending 30% of their income on housing. The EPI study concludes that women of color and aging women of color are spending 45 to 48% of their income on housing. This, I submit, is unacceptable. For Pawtucket not to commit to inclusionary zoning at the pitiful level of 10%, forgive me, at the threat development, I can only regard it as an unconscionable result. And I urge you to preserve it in the zoning ordinance, to increase it to 15%, as Mr. West has suggested, and to not engage in segregation of that issue from the ordinance as a whole. We've come here tonight, only of us to speak to this housing component of this ordinance. And I ask the chair to entertain the comments at this meeting. And again, I would very, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have just a couple of brief remarks. I would suggest that the Fred District was already known as a vulnerable district. And I think it would be a shame if it continued down that road. Rhode Island Housing Works Factbook reports that a third of the households in Rhode Island are paying more than a third of their income for shelter. That's poverty, and it's desperate, and it's leading to homelessness. These are our fellow citizens. If they can find housing, they have a chance of becoming productive, and you should pardon the expression, tax-paying citizens. Central Falls, which comprises half the Fred District, is proposing 20%. I think the best we can do is 15%. Thank you.
Andy Wheeler.
I live in Winter Court near State Park. And this is my first time at a city council meeting. I'm here today because of the numerous benefits of affordable housing. I just want to speak all over to that. First off, affordable housing gives people access to basic human resources. And the lack of affordable housing has been shown to lead to poor physical and mental health outcomes and lower unemployment. With so much at stake for individuals and families, it is imperative that we support affordable housing options in the city, and this is like great opportunity to do so. Now, for a moment, let's say that you're just not a compassionate person. Looking at you all today, I find that very hard to believe, but hey, it happens. Even if affordable housing wasn't the right thing to do, it most certainly is the economically smart thing to do for someone's business. Affordable housing has been proven to attract key service providers to communities, and it enables people to search and find jobs in the area. Furthermore, the daily cost of supporting affordable housing is often far less than the cost of placing someone in a shelter, jail, or hospital. If the point of the project is to benefit the community economically, we should be asking developers to do just that, by supporting at a minimum a modest 10% of affordable housing allotment for the residents. Now, let's say you don't really care about the numerous economic benefits to the city you represent. All right, again doubtful, but let's just go with it. Not only is affordable housing an economically smart thing to do, but the arguments against it don't stand up to screwing up. Others may use a much higher rate than 10%, and developers are not spared all these places. And if a developer doesn't want to come here because they don't want to do the right thing for the community, the economically smart thing for the community, then they are gone for Pawtucket. Simply put, lacking affordable housing requirements defeats the purpose of developing the benefits of Pawtucket community. Any way you deliberate this, including at a minimum, a minus 10% of affordable housing allotment as a requirement of any development, is the right, smartest, and best decision we can make for the people of Pawtucket. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for being here and having a great chance to speak this evening. I live in the Bailey Street office. I live on the Bailey Street, and I've been a proud resident there for over 10 years now. I'm here at John Barstow on that, and actually very much love the diversity and inclusivity that I found to be a part of the fabric of Pawtucket, and I have a lot of comments that I heard this evening. I also want to say that directly around this building, there are signs about so many of the wonderful things that have been happening with the Hardest Kitchen, and I have Brewers' Guild, we love these things. But we are also a community of, I think, 25 units in this building, and we are working professionals that live here. Some of us work from home. So we have some concerns around noise ordinance is being enforced now. And we'd just like to have some help in having those reinforced global processes so that we can see some of us who work from home. And then just, I think, more generally regarding the zoning ordinance. You're hearing that we have a lot of unanswered questions. I think some of our questions, particularly in that area, because we're overlooking homeless people outside, just quality of life issues, some of the questions around excessive parking. I would say excessive parking because we are sort of surrounded by a sea of asphalt around the city, and making certain that we may have a lot more of that. A lot of these parking spots are not occupied for much of the day, weekends and weekdays. And so I pay a lot of attention to that. So I just ask you to consider these things and have a good day ahead of you for the conference.
Laurie Byron.
Good evening. I'm a desk and a female in my life who's too busy dating mom to watch some porn. It's a little of the same generation. My email has been way too long this time, so I decided I'm here now. I'm going to talk to you. I am much in favor of the affordable housing. But because of what I do for a living and working in a university here in Rhode Island, I can tell you that the opportunities that you would miss by not allowing affordable housing to be grown root would be astronomical. Our Gen Z population is probably 26% of the population in the United States. That with the Gen Y is nearly 50% at the 48% mark. These two populations are attracted to metro living. They are commuters. They are frugal with their money, and they want the ability to be health-conscious, live in an area that will allow them to come and go using computer services, using trains, and being able to go in and out of metropolis locations with ease. As a parent of a Gen Z heir, I am now listening to where do I want to go to college? I can tell you right now it's not very right. But what am I going to do to make sure it comes back to Rhode Island? So we have two opportunities. Our students who currently come to Rhode Island talking for education that we provide, and those who leave Rhode Island to get education elsewhere, what will we do to ensure that they come back and continue the growth of our state? Affordable housing will allow this to continue and happen. It is not just a handout. It is a hand up. It is a huge resource for our community. It will regain the community tenfold in both stability, buy-in, and pride. Living on Cherry Street, I can tell you the development of our street neighborhood has been instrumental in how I can now bring my children to and from work and school without having to tell them who that lady on the corner is. It is important that we consider not just an opportunity for those who are already here, but an opportunity for those who come here for education, for those who are looking to come around for opportunity, and for those who wish to go back. Thank you for your time.
Elizabeth Radka.
Hello. I'm also here to talk about the zoning ordinance. I'm excited, actually, about the ordinance. I think we're all excited about the prospect of reviving the progress here at Canadian Community Business Development and new facilitation of certain properties there. But like everyone else who's here, I do have some concerns about the inclusionary zoning provisions. My husband and I pay almost exactly 30% of our monthly income to rent, and that's good, right? That somebody else actually has pretty much what we are earning for. Most financial experts will say that's what you want to pay in rent so that you have enough money to pay your other bills. And we're just about exactly there. It has taken us 10 years to get to this point. And the only reason that we are at this point is because, for some reason, our landlord is a wonderful, wonderful man who has not raised our rent in nine years. So we have managed to get raises and promotions and make good career changes so that we are finally at a point where we are decent. We're not heaven's angel, we're decent. And I say this to illustrate the point that housing in Pawtucket and most of Rhode Island and in a lot of the country is already nearly unaffordable. It's already difficult for people with no kids and two good jobs to pay rent. And we did it because we love this area, and we love the apartment, and we're happy with this community. My concern is not for us. My concern is for the most vulnerable of those in our community, the most financially vulnerable. Because what is going to happen when these prices start to go up? We'll adjust, you know, we'll do it. But what about the single parents? What about the families who are facing significant financial hardship that will be forced out of our community? And that is just not right. I know that there's been talk about the 10% inclusionary zoning. I would really like to see that be 15. I would love to see that be 20, but I don't want to ask for too much. But honestly, it's not going to, I don't believe that it's going to deter developers. I did some research today, and I took a look at a study from the Boston Planning and Development Agency, who had a similar program. And it talked a whole lot in their 2018 report about all the development that occurred with these provisions included therein. I can make this story if you want my copy or my printer starts around a little bit low on ink. So take a look at it. But I just want to restate again, you know, I think even those of us who are doing well are still struggling from time to time. I cannot imagine how difficult it would be for those of us who are truly in the middle of the spectrum in terms of influence. So thank you very much.
Christina Contreras.
My name is Christina Gonzalez-Hawes, and I'm a policy analyst for Rhode Island Coalition for the Homeless, the others of the city, in support of this. How have those previously been supportive of this inclusionary housing? Use the microphone, please. Oh, sure. Just lift it. Thank you. I can also project. I should just speak a little louder. I have to make more out of this. So the Rhode Island Coalition for the Homeless, which is located here in Pawtucket on Main Street, works in collaboration with our member agencies to advance solutions to end and prevent homelessness in our state. And for that reason, we are very supportive of any expansion of affordable housing. The lack of affordable housing in Rhode Island directly contributes to so many Rhode Islanders experiencing homelessness. As many folks have stated, right now, about a third of Rhode Island households are cosburdened. And that means that they're spending more than 30% of their income on housing. And for many, that burden becomes too great to bear, and they lose their home and transition from being housed into experiencing homelessness. On any given night in our state, 1,101 Rhode Islanders will experience homelessness. And to give you a sense of who's impacted, according to the 2019 discount fact book that was just published this past week, in 2018, children made up 17% of the people who used emergency shelters, domestic violence shelters, and transitional housing. Of children, nearly half of them were age six and under. And the fact book also shows that in 2018, public school personnel identified 68 children in Pawtucket who were experiencing homelessness. The solution to ending this crisis is to provide more safe, secure, affordable homes. That is a necessity, but it's a necessity that remains out of reach for far too many Rhode Islanders. So the Coalition urges the council to please seize this opportunity to ensure that a percentage of the development that will be happening in the district remains affordable. This is an enormous opportunity to benefit the city of Pawtucket, but we must ensure that everyone benefits from that. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak before you today. I do have copies of our letter that I'll get to the corner. I've also included in there your excellent work, how to end long-term homelessness in Rhode Island, that provides many excellent recommendations on how we can work together and tackle this crisis and ensure that Rhode Island is a state where no one experiences homelessness. Thank you very much for your time.
Andrew McWhale.
Okay, I'm just going to reiterate a couple of things that some folks have said. So one of the big things people aren't talking about, everyone's talking about the economic impact on people and income inequality, which I know, not that it seems like it happens, but the council has said, aren't we, very familiar with the lunch hanging issue, you know, kids who can eat because they have enough money, and we're going to tell them they can't live here because they don't have enough money. But really, at the end of the day, what it comes down to is 10% at 80% is, basically it comes down to they're only losing 2% of their price. And that's if they only, only use the 30% of median income pricing, which we know they won't. So developers are losing a lot less than 2%, but at the max, they're losing 2% of what they're going to charge. We can't bend over backwards for developers that way, not for 2%. The last corporation, we bent way over 4, decided not to beat the wuster. So I'm done dealing with them. If they have enough money, if they can't take 2% loss, and it's not even that much of a loss, then they're not good neighbors, and they don't want to be here anymore.
Jim McHade.
This has nothing to do with everybody else here tonight, so I'm sorry. I guess I got the sore thumb. My name is Jim McHade, and I'm speaking with you about something that happened last week. So off my own, so I'll go the awful way through it. On Wednesday, I went to my truck that was parked on Dean Street to go run errands, and I discovered that my truck was not where it had been parked. So I immediately figured out it had had been stolen or towed, and then I figured out that I probably should call the All Times Police Department, which confirmed that my vehicle was towed. This cost me $100, and several hours of productivity lost that was out of mental anguish. My registration had expired on Monday. Now, the people I've talked to, I've not lived in this city very long, or in the state, but the folks that have lived here longer than I have said that they were surprised and thought I would proceed to take it. Had that happened, this matter would have been quickly resolved because I could have had my, I could have showed that my registration was actually approved the next day. I do not think it's I do not think it's fair for this to have happened, especially considering the police officer I spoke with informed me that it's not the discretion of an officer to make a decision like that. Police informed me that a new business on Dean Street has complained about parked cars on the section of Dean that says "no parking on either side." I previously parked off-street in the restaurant to my right, my other right. That has since closed off the access to the parking lot of all of the agents who was. Now, the very slow-moving two-year-old renovation effort, that's another complaint of another day. But when I, when I and other residents who are forced to park elsewhere did so, many of us did start parking on Dean. I was confused about whether or not there was parking all in that entire section of Dean, so I did call Polk County Police Department, which was a couple years ago. Now, to clarify, I was informed by the officer who I spoke with that we could park on that side of Dean. That's, I'm talking about the side where the artist residence complex has been currently at a little tax level on 27 miles, bless you. And that's now being lifted, but I was told that side of Dean was okay. So apparently, now that's not an option since officers were on Dean in private place that day, which is what led them to order my car to tow. So as far as I'm concerned, inconsistent information led to the officers being there in the first place, and the officer's decision to have a car towed not only would be a high cost for a vehicle which had barely 24 hours expired registration, I think is excessive for someone who clearly doesn't have that high of an income or else I would probably be able to afford living somewhere that I could park off-street. And that leads me to declare that this feels like an discriminatory incident because I don't think I can explain that. If I didn't park off-street, if I understand the way things work, a police officer wouldn't even have a chance to order my truck to be towed. And for the record, vehicles are still parked on Main Street. I haven't been down the streets, but you can just consult here. But it's about a quarter mile, I'll walk my vehicle. So I do walk down Main Street every time, and I don't see tickets being written. I don't even see officers. So again, with all that being considered, this feels, the words I would use, discriminatory and arbitrary. I'm not the same person to go to city council meetings. In fact, this is the first time I've ever done anything like this. I've covered city council meetings in other states, working in news. For this, I understand you guys be able to, pretty large volume of complaints and other things and comments. But as one citizen of the city to another, I'm asking, if not some sort of vessel for compensation, I would at least ask maybe for the city to explain to me in contact or so that I provided, what the process is, why a ticket wasn't written. And that's not just for the $100 we're talking about. There are also the additional money that I have to spend at some point to enhance my truck and make sure the place is secure because when this happened, it ripped off pretty well, and now they're pretty wholesome. So that's all I've got. Thank you for your time.
Gregory Wismowski.
Good evening. Thank you so much for your service. All of the esteemed and honorable members of our city council, especially the president and chair. I'd like to thank all of my fellow citizens and residents for coming out tonight. This is quite a journey for a city council. Thanks for having us all, and thanks for listening. I have a few moments to spend with you regarding the threat district ordinance. I think this could be really great city policy. I'm not going to be very shy. I love Petucket. I've been here for about five and a half years. Absolutely wrecked this place to everybody. I do a lot of networking around the tri-state area. I go to places, and I meet young, talented people who are at junctures in their lives, and they're looking for a place to come, to engage, to put down roots, maybe start a family, or maybe even open up a business. The best and the brightest that I've talked to around, because of course, who I hang out with, I love Petucket, right? Like-minded people hang out together. They ask me a couple of things when we're talking about where I live and why I live. And what they're really looking for are two things. People my age who are looking for a community, like that community, to demonstrate fairness to everyone. That's all. We don't know what tomorrow might bring, but we all know how lucky we are to have everything that we get. And we want to make sure that we're living in a community that expresses those values. So yes, the threat district is going to bring a lot of people to this community who are looking to add value. But the people that lead with values are looking for fairness. They're also looking for a city government that is responsive to the people and responsive when it matters, and responsive in an effective way, that meaningful, that does things. I love what you all are doing. I know that the people who lead with value, who create value in communities for a long term, they're looking for a city council who's willing to put their neck out for us, for the little people. That's why we like you. Because we don't have time to go out and do the amazing job that you are all capable of doing. And that's why you're all sitting here. We believe in you. We come here today to let you know that we know that you can impress it. We've heard all the reasons that you can respond with a stiff spine and to tell people exactly why you're sticking your neck out for the people of Petucket. Because we want people here who lead with values, as well as create values. So before I go, and thank you again for having me, it seems like a really easy sell. There's a lot of good press that could come out of 15, 20, being the first city to do 25%. Let's create some real outcomes that we can promote and bring the people to this community that aren't what we need and that you want. Thank you so much for your time.
Good evening. My name is Katie West. I will thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'll try to be patient, since you patiently sat here. A lot of comments on this issue. I'm from the Housing Network of Rhode Island or the State's Community Development Trade Association. And me, our office is also in Petucket, located at 107 Dean Street. So I'm here to speak in support of the inclusionary housing provision and the zoning ordinance. And I just want to share some numbers. You've already heard comments, wonderful comments from residents that I kind of referred to. But Petucket, according to Census and HUD data, over half of the city's households fall below the 80% median income, which is the benchmark that's typically used for affordable housing eligibility. With the number of long-term affordable homes that the city has, which is 2,836, the city is only serving about 18% of residents who would qualify for affordable housing. That means that Petucket is not meeting the housing needs of 82% of citizens' incomes below the threshold. And these are working professionals, these are people with families, these are seniors who've lived in the community for a long time. So just in closing, there's already ample research on the benefits of affordable housing. These are amplified when people are living close to public transit, close to job opportunities, the vision that exists for the district. And so we would encourage the council to support this inclusionary housing provision. We would support the comments that folks have suggested of raising it above the 10%. And I want to thank you again for your time.
Deborah Seagull.
Hi, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. Like everybody else here, I'm in favor of the zoning ordinance and the minimum of at least 10% and none more. And I just have two reasons for that. One is I've lived in Petucket for the last 33 years, and I love this place. I haven't had a bad day in Petucket. I love the diversity of the community that I live in. I love the neighborliness. I love the racial diversity, the economic diversity, and stability. It's, in many ways, America has its best. And the idea of gentrifying the city and driving out people who can't afford high-priced housing troubles me. It's not why I live here. I'm proud of my city. And I think you're serving the city in your special roles, spending your nighttime doing what you're doing right now because you love the city too. So I'm here for that reason, because I love Petucket and I want to preserve its diverse nature. I'm also here because I teach a graduate course on homelessness in the National Social Institute where I wrote out of college. And I teach a graduate course on homelessness in the medical school at Rhode Island University. And in that capacity, my mind has been a little bit about the reasons for the housing crisis across America, certainly not in the Petucket problem. As you probably know, it's the result of two or three massive national phenomena. One is wage stagnation. People can have two full-time wage earners and not work their way out of poverty, working full-time at minimum wage. We have wage stagnation, and we have the withdrawal of the federal government since the Reagan years from providing funding to increase the supply of affordable housing across America. The state doesn't have the money. Petucket doesn't have the money to build its own affordable housing. The federal government isn't helping anymore, hasn't helped for decades through both public and democratic negotiations. The only way right now in America to expand the supply of affordable housing is through public-private partnerships, like the one that's available through this ordinance. We can do it. It's also, it's not just a social justice issue. It's also an economic development issue. When families are spending all of their money on rent, they don't have money to spend on other goods and services. When they have affordable rent, they can go shopping at the mall. Go to restaurants, we have town projects. It builds a stronger community economically, as well as in terms of social justice. So I would just love to see the city council jump on this bandwagon and then use this opportunity. Other places have this, this 10%, 15%, 20% allocation. It's doable. And we don't need to, we let ourselves be held hostage by people who are developing, wanting to earn a profit, which I totally honor, it's a gem, but to have them sort of scare us and to cater to their demand because other communities are doing it and then doing it successfully. So thank you.